Good morning and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, March 26th. My name is Sean Flowerday. I am your Chair. With me is Vice Chair Rick Vest and Commissioners Matt Schulte, Krista and Krista Yocum. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please begin.
Location announcement of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. Copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located at the wall of the rear of the hearing room. All written materials to be discussed at today's open meeting are available for electronic viewing from the county clerk staff. Printing options are available upon request. These materials can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Brings us to our first item. Item one is the minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on March 19th, 2024.
Move approval. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson? Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Item two, claims. Two A is approval of the claims processed through March 26, 2024. And I'll note for Commissioners as an amendment for payroll.
Yeah, I would move approval of the claims processed through March 26, 2024 and include payroll dispersments through March 20, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Two B, approval of a claim to El Centro de las Americas in the amount of eleven thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars and ten cents.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Abstain.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries three zero with an abstention. Item three, consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by Commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there is an exception, these items will be approved as one single vote of the Board of Commissioners. They are the approval of A amendments to the following county contracts. C dash twenty-three dash zero three one three with Production Creek LLC doing business as Production Creek Specialty Advertising for the annual supply of clothing, screen printed and/or embroidered apparel. C dash twenty-three dash zero two six six with Production Creek LLC doing business as Production Creek Specialty Advertising for the annual supply of work looping. C dash twenty-one dash zero three three one with Lincoln General Star, Lee Enterprises Incorporated for the annual service of publishing legal notices and other verbiage necessary to conduct City, County, and Public Building Commission business. C dash twenty-two dash zero one six two with Jim Peterson Auction Company to provide unclaimed property auction services. C dash twenty-three dash zero two eight five with Miller Seed Company and C dash twenty-three dash zero two eight six with United Seeds Incorporated for the annual supply of grass seed. B, change order one to county contract C dash twenty-three dash zero eight six seven with JJK Construction LLC to replace county bridge C two eight four. Change order number two to county contract C dash twenty-three dash zero nine one four with JMN Construction LLC to replace county bridge N one fourteen. Utility permit two five one two allowing Winkin Water System to install a new lotter wine. And finally, E, utility permit two five one six allowing Black Hills Energy Corporation to install a new gas mine.
Move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to new business. Item four. Four A, a resolution in the matter recognizing March 25th through 29th, 2024 as First Responder Wellness Week.
Would you like to have the resolution read into the record?
What's that?
Would you like to have the resolution read into the record?
Of course, if you would do that, that'd be awesome.
Happy to.
Before the Board of County Commissioners of Lancaster County, Nebraska, in the matter recognizing March 25th through 29th, 2024 as First Responder Wellness Week, whereas first responders, including law enforcement officers, firefighters, emergency medical services, personnel, 911 dispatchers, correctional officers, and members of other organizations in the public safety sector come together to protect and aid our community in the event of an emergency. And whereas first responders risk their life and safety every day for the performance of their duties to protect our citizens. And whereas first responders are tasked with handling dangerous and complicated situations. And whereas nationwide, law enforcement officers will go through an average of one hundred and eighty-eight critical incidents throughout the course of their career. And whereas first responders often experience stress that has real physical impacts, including cardiac issues, diabetes, obesity, and sleep issues. And whereas first responders are up to twenty-five point six times higher risk for developing post-traumatic stress disorder when compared to individuals without such experiences. And whereas first responders wellness includes management of issues, including but not limited to sleep, fitness, nutrition, fatigue, anger management, post-traumatic stress and loss. And whereas we recognize the integral role of first responders play in our communities and the benefits derived from their hard work, commitment, sacrifice, and hesitating dedication. And whereas research shows that fostering strong wellness culture inside first responder agencies enhances relations with the community they serve. Now therefore, the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim March 25th through 29th, 2024 as First Responders Wellness Week in Lancaster County.
First off, I want to thank you guys for doing this for us. When we announced this last Friday, I believe with the media, did some research, and I found out law enforcement officers that work ten to nineteen years have a life expectancy of sixty-six years of age, and a lot of it's heart disease and cancer. And so that was just kind of a huge eye-opener to me. And I want to sit and thank Sarah. She, we got this. Lexa Poole's been the big push for this this year. She's done a great job. She sends me the videos that we do on our daily Zoom, and they talk about it during our lineup. And we just appreciate our people and let them know that we understand what they are going through. I want to thank her. Do you would like to say a few words on this?
Yeah, I guess thank you guys for letting us bring this today and bring awareness to our first responders and kind of showing appreciation that their health and well-being are very important to not just us, but to as the county as a whole. So thank you for giving us this time. And yeah, every day we'll have a different topic that we focus on, whether it's physical fitness, nutrition, mental health, and then we wrap it up by bringing in family support as well, because when they go home, their families can also be impacted by things that they see every day. So thank you guys so much for letting us do this.
You know, I've been doing this thirty-one years now, and the stigma when I first started of getting mental health and doing that is, you know, it was a sign of weakness if you asked for help. And thank, thank the Lord now that that has changed. And, you know, the willingness to do that, and I think it's going to end up saving a lot more careers. And as you know, we do the Able Project on that, and that's another thing to step in before somebody does end up losing their career. And they concentrate on wellness too. So I just appreciate everything you guys have done, and thank you for doing this.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Now, we deeply appreciate what you do for our community, for it. All of you do for our community. It's really important that we provide you all with the tools to stay healthy and continue serving the community as you you do. So we're glad we're take, you're taking this initiative, Ben.
You bet. We got a great group of men and women that work at the Sheriff's Office, and we appreciate your guys' support. And I really appreciate them because it is a tough job, and they do a great job. And our community is lucky to have them.
And I just really wanted to say one thing too. Sarah, thank you so very much for mentioning the impact that it has upon the families, because it really does. And you know, when you talk about the stigma of mental illness and so forth, PTSD and everything, law enforcement officers are certain, first responders are certainly liable for that. And that certainly, you know, they receive it. And the one thing, those are called the unseen wounds.
Yes.
People just don't understand that. And so when you start dealing with that, that's tough. And it's really a good thing.
Yeah, it's going to lengthen careers on what we are doing and being able to do and getting help on that. And so people don't just get lost, because there's been a lot of good people that have lost their careers over things like this, you know, because they self-medicate with alcohol and things like that. And they, it's good that we can go out and get the help. That really does help people.
It's good that our society recognizes.
You bet. Thank you again.
Move approval.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Someone's calling you?
Somebody wants the second from long distance.
We have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Brings us to item four B, resolution regarding the sale of real property located at one thousand and five O Street, Lincoln, Lancaster County, Nebraska.
Move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I, I guess I have a question maybe just for the attorney on this. I just don't see in this resolution like a price or who's buying it. And I'm still kind of new on this board, so if you could just help me understand what exactly this does.
Yeah, so this is the deed that transfers the county's one-half interest in one zero zero five West O Street to the city, that the city will then have title to all of the property, and then they will sell it to the third-party buyer. Price and those kinds of things are dealt with in our purchase agreement with the city and that talks about this transaction and how it's going to go. The signing of the warranty deed just is part of the process of transferring our interest in the property over. But in terms of the terms of sale and all of those kinds of things, those are dealt with in the purchase agreements. And there's a purchase agreement between the county and the city. And now there's also a purchase agreement between the city and the third-party buyer.
Okay. Okay. Which, I mean, it's a building that's not being used. We want to sell it, right? So that's, and the process is now we're turning over our portion of the deed to the city, they will complete the sale then?
Right. Our first purchase agreement with the city was in 2022 where the board had already made the decision to sell the property and transfer its title to the city. So we're just kind of carrying out that agreement.
Okay. Okay. Thanks for clarifying that. I appreciate it.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second, I believe. So without further discussion, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to four C, a resolution in the matter approving the Lincoln Lancaster County Public Building Commission, PBC, project and authorizing the PBC to acquire real property in the name of Lincoln and Lancaster County.
Good morning, Commissioners. Karen Peterson, Director of Facility and Property. This one's a little bit different, and I'll be glad to explain it to you. By signing this resolution, what you are doing is allowing the Public Building Commission to begin negotiations to buy three parcels of land on block one seventeen. These are the remaining three parcels that are not publicly owned. And those parcels are held in about fifty-fifty ownership between the city and the county. The easiest way to describe block seventeen is it's that way. Our little aging partners building sits right in the middle of that lot. If you look to the northeast corner, that's where our district energy plant is. District Energy provides the hot and chilled water for a group of these buildings, including this one. This is how we get our heating and cooling. The land, these three parcels are actually adjacent to that on the northwest corner. The building owner actually approached DEC about potentially selling it, and of course, they turned it over to us, which, which is great. We have a, we have an owner that has interest in giving up these parcels. It's not fitting his business. But by having that entire block, certainly that lends to the flexibility of the use of the block. But we are also quite interested in retaining those parcels in the event that we have to expand or choose to expand that district energy plant for future growth, including potential private sector partnerships. We need that land. Construction going vertically is cost prohibitive. Nothing will get done if we have to go vertically. So that's the purpose of this. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
No, actually, it just really, it totally makes sense. We talked about that in PBC.
Yeah.
It totally makes sense for us to go forward and to purchase that. You know, it makes it contiguous. And so actually, what really happens with that is, as you said, it creates more flexibility and it is for future use.
Correct. Correct. You have a question?
I move approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to four D, a resolution directing county engineer to conduct a study in a planning department to write a report regarding vacating a portion of Branched Oak Road between North Twenty-seventh Street and North Fortieth Street, more particularly described in Exhibit A and located in Lancaster County, Nebraska.
Pam Damon, Lancaster County Engineer. This resolution is to re-study a section of Branched Oak Road from North Twenty-seventh to North Fortieth Street. I don't anticipate that my office will take very long to reissue this to you.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to four E, an agreement with the Shemmer Associates Incorporated to provide design and construction administration services for the remediation of the Wash Bay located at four 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 Cherry Creek Road, Lincoln, Nebraska. The cost of the county shall not exceed eighteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Pam Damon, Lancaster County Engineer. This eighteen thousand dollars is to design some, basically some concrete cages to surround our steel beams on our building that it houses our only wash bay in Lancaster County for our equipment. As you can see from the photo that I've put up on the overhead, you can actually see light through the building. The corrosive materials that were washing off those, washing off those machines to, to keep them from corroding has now corroded the building. And so we currently vacate this building if we have a wind forecast speed of more than twenty-five miles an hour. So we need to get this fixed.
So this, this remediation will make it so we don't have to vacate it when there's wind?
Commissioner Schulte, that is correct. It still doesn't make the building awesome. And we obviously still have some dramatic facilities issues in Lancaster County with the engineering department. But this at least will shore up this building and make it safer.
There's lots of days when we have rooms over twenty-five.
Today being one of those.
Yeah, I mean, Commissioner Amundson, you know, we, we are more windy than the windy city, so.
I would move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to four F, appointment of the following to the Lincoln Lancaster County Board of Health for terms to end on April fifteenth, 2025. They are Jay Jarvis, Jasmine Kingsley, and Dr. John Dustin Loy.
I would move approval of the reappointment of Jay Jarvis. I'd like to consider the other couple candidates separately.
Okay, I'll second. Sure. Okay. We have a motion and a second for the appointment of Jay Jarvis. Is there any discussion? I've served with Jay over the last couple of years. I think he's excellent. I'm glad to have him on the board with us. Hearing no other discussion, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I would move approval of Jasmine and Dr. John also for appointment to the Lincoln Lancaster County Board of Health.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I guess I'd just like to point out that the reason I'd like to consider these candidates separately is that Jay Jarvis joined the board in 2021, whereas the other two candidates were prior to some of the COVID stuff that happened. And I oppose the reappointment of these members of the Lincoln Health Board who drove us astray in 2021 and 22. Their resume of failure speaks volumes. Under their watch, schools were shut down, leaving irreparable damage on the future of our children. Under their leadership, the Lincoln Board of Health spewed uneducated guesses as facts. They told us a shot was a vaccine. They shut down businesses, driving our economy into disarray. They maintained a mandate even into small towns of our county who clearly didn't need it. They closed religious, religious services and dealt in fear. Instead of awarding these members of the Board of Health with a reappointment, we should be looking for a new direction. A direction that examines all the facts rather than listening to a few. A direction that considers smaller communities rather than only the will of the Lincoln Mayor. A direction that believes in education, entrepreneurship, and common sense leadership. A direction that breathes life into the community at a vulnerable time rather than distrust. I oppose the reappointment of members of the Lincoln Lancaster County Board who, a health board who misguided us during COVID, and call upon our mayor, the city council, and this board to seek new members of this essential board.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
No.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion passes four one. Brings us to four G, an appointment to the Lancaster County Board of Zoning Appeals for a term commencing April first, 2024 and ending March thirty-first, 2029.
So the three applicants, the sort of shortlisted applicants, met with us last Thursday. They were all impressive. I think every one of them would serve well. You know, I think it, of the three, I think personally Joe Shaw kind of stood out to me. His experience both as a former city council member, you know, doing his work with neighbor works here in our community, his experience as a planning commission member previously, albeit in another community, all speak to his qualifications here. So I guess I was inclined towards him, but I mean, it truly, all three of them would do an excellent job.
I have to agree. I think all three of them are to be commended for, we appreciate their offer of service and clearly have resumes of law, a lot of service to our community and would serve well. I too support Joe Shaw, and I would actually nominate Joe Shaw for this position at this point.
And I would second that nomination. And again, as we've talked about in the past, our community is very fortunate. We had eight applications for one position on this board. I even like candidates, not all the candidates I thought should be in the final three made it, but you know, this is the process. So kudos to everybody who put their name forward. We certainly ended up with three really good interviews last week. I think Commissioner Flowerday said it right. Any three of those would be a good one. We'd have to pick one. And so I do second the nomination of Joe for all the reasons listed.
I would actually ask, like, can we just keep the other two's contact information, you know, in a file on hand or something? I would just, I would, the next time there's an opening, I would encourage either of, either and both of them to apply. So, because all three of them could do a great job. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Brings us to four H, a contract with the Lincoln Children's Zoo for a Lancaster County employee event on June twenty-seventh, 2024. The cost of the county is three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, I would move approval of this. This is an employee appreciation event, which we had last year at the Salt Dogs game. And this is an opportunity for employees to bring their family out to a local attraction and have a night celebrating all this good about our community. So I move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Four I, a mini gone, a mini grant contract application with the Nebraska Department of Transportation in the amount of three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars for the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office to participate in the national, nationwide drug impaired driving enforcement mobilization to help reduce the number of drunk, drunk and drug drivers and other alcohol-related violations.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Four J, a memorandum of understanding with Lancaster County on behalf of the Lancaster County Corrections and the Center for People regarding collaborative efforts to support individuals leaving incarceration.
Hello, my name's Michaela Wolverca from the Center for People. And by approving this MOU, the Center for People would be able to extend our services inside the county corrections, and also serving at our Center for People location. We currently serve the state of Nebraska, the Work Release Center. And so we would like to expand our services in building resumes, conducting mock interviews, working on soft skills to help people re-enter into Lincoln.
This is exactly. I'd like to share a short story. I know, personally know someone who's been in and out of jail a lot of their life. And when he was able to get out and had a plan for the future, he could get jobs, but he couldn't keep them. And it had to do with not having some of those soft skills. And so it's taken him a while to really get to moving forward, like on that career path or having work. I definitely would approve it.
I would second that too, because I think that the transition, you know, the assistance that they would receive in the transition services is absolutely critical.
I'm honestly just mad we haven't done it sooner.
Exactly.
This is really an outgrowth of Maria's work, and we hired as a re-entry specialist who's beginning this process for us. And they couldn't be here because of Brad and Maria had another commitment that they had to attend. So we're very fortunate to have you here this morning. And I know it's just exciting for all of us to see this step forward. And you do do like job training as well? That's part of the program? I mean,
Yes.
Kind of a trade school type environment where people can get certifications?
Yes.
Can you talk about that just a little bit?
So for the past twenty years, the Center for People has been really focused on our basic needs. This year, we are currently seeing twenty-three hundred unduplicated families a week coming through our food. This year, we are currently seeing 2,300 unduplicated families a week coming through our food and diaper line. When surveyed, 80% of those families were working at least one job. So that was telling us that our community, our people are not earning a livable wage. And so our goal for our next 20 years and beyond is to really upskill and reskill our community in those high wage, high demand, high need jobs in business, healthcare, technology, and skilled trades.
And you're connected with them beyond that?
Yes.
This doesn't end with you training them. You have connections.
Yes, we will actually be able to onboard our our individuals who we've trained onto our platform called Talent Marketplace where we are paired with what we call employers of choice who have that pathway for growth, who have a safe and inclusive work environment that pay a livable wage. And we want to connect our community to those employers and we want to give those employers quality employees.
Tremendous vision. Tremendous vision. Do you have a strategic plan that incorporates all of that?
We do. Yes. I don't know if it is online.
Well, can you email it?
Yes, I can. Yes, I can. And we will be fully launching our Talent Marketplace on April 2nd of this year with our Center for People Career Fair. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Brings us to four K. Authorizing Kristi Bauer, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer, to perform the function of signing official for purposes of granted administration through the ERA Commons.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. For L, the Cedars Deposit Placement Agreement with Exchange Bank for insured cash sweep operations.
Rachel Garver, Lancaster County Treasurer. The Cedars and the ICS are both types of collateral that we have. They're instruments that we have, that Exchange Bank use to collateralize what we have in our money market and our CDs that we have with the bank.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. And four M is the ICS Deposit Replacement Agreement with Exchange Bank for insured cash sweep operations.
I'll move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Four N, an agreement with the Lancaster County Agricultural Society to use the Sand Hills Global Event Center as a polling place for the May 14th and November 5th, 2024 elections. There is no cost to the county.
Good morning Commissioners. Todd Wilchin, the Lancaster County Election Commissioner. Before you, this is the standard use agreement that the event center, excuse me, requires all participants or all users to sign. The county attorney has reviewed it. He struck all the language that was problematic, which involved insurance and other requirements that the county is not required to provide as a political subdivision. So yeah, we are very grateful for the event center and other locations throughout the community. We have 198 precincts and 190-ish polling places. A lot of them serve as a double. Without them, we wouldn't have a successful election. And so we're very grateful for the event center and other venues to host our polling sites. And they'd be happy to answer any questions.
Just one about the, how many volunteers does it take? How many people do we have to add to cover those 198?
Right. So this will be a statewide election. So each polling place will need at least five employees. And so roughly 1,100 people will be required to manage our polling places and also support all the other activities that go on on election day.
And those people that want to serve in this capacity can reach out to your office.
Yeah, and we actually have the information on our website. We've put our application as well as our training online. So anybody that's interested in working as an election board worker can go to our website. That's www.lancaster.gov/election. And it's on that website that they can find all the information for applying as well as being trained.
Thank you. I move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Brings us to four O. Contracts with the following for the annual supply of turf fertilizer and chemicals. Sioux Land Turf Products doing business as Zimco Supply Company. The amount not to exceed $425.17 and Van Dees Supply Company in the amount not to exceed
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Brings us to four P. The Constitution and Bylaws of Lancaster County Extension.
Yeah.
Good morning, Karen Wobig, Lancaster County Extension, and apologies for what's going on here. I'm on the end of it, so I should be okay, but it's lasted quite a while. Anyway, this is really the conclusion of the documents that we have that connect the county with the university to function our office to serve Lancaster County. And so the Constitution and Bylaws kind of connect with the interlocal as you've seen probably. And Candace Barron's, not here, I don't, or you are Candace. So I wondered, but I wasn't sure. I'm sorry, we haven't probably met. We do, and phoned, definitely. Thank you, Candace, for your assistance with this. It got a little bit mixed up. This probably should have been done with the interlocal passage, but we, too many irons in the fire, I think, there, and we just got a little bit off. Anyway, so it will just connect all of the pieces and the, it has been approved by the attorney's office. So hopefully this will end some of the documents here for a while. I think it's a five-year agreement.
Always good to wrap this up and put it together and move approval. And I'll second that.
Just to ask you a question. I'm generally supportive. So help me understand, is this a new document or is this a revision?
This is just a renewal, probably, but we did revise some things. The university kind of wanted a statewide look to their documents. So the interlocal, the constitution and bylaws all had a template, so to speak, that they would like to follow. And then little changes were made to match the counties around the state.
So is there any substantial differences in the frequency of meetings, the number of members or anything like that?
No.
Okay.
All the same, basically. We have, this kind of is the overseeing of the Lancaster Extension Board, you know, for the most part, too. You probably saw that in the document. But, and it's, that has remained the same for some time. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Next item is item four Q. There are a series of recommendations from the Personnel Policy Board. Commissioners, I have a note that we're going to hold item four Q nine from the county attorney. So I will read four Q one through eight. There are a request to recreate the classification of diesel technician. A request to revise and change the title of the following classifications from Equipment Mechanic II to Automotive Mechanic and Road Maintenance Superintendent to Road Superintendent. A request to revise, change title, and change the pay range of the classification of social worker to mitigation specialist. A request to change the pay grade of the classification of investigator. A request to revise the classification of Equipment Operator II. A request to change the title of classification of Casual Worker II to Casual Worker. A request to delete the following classifications, Casual Worker I and Equipment Mechanic I. And a request to delete the following pay grades, A01, A02, A03, and A04.
Is there a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. I wanted to talk briefly about items Q one, diesel technician. And the diesel technician position is something that we agreed to do in negotiations with the union contract to be a diesel mechanic on the heavy end of equipment. Requires more education. It's much more sophisticated equipment. And we had really been struggling in it. One, we went actually a significant period last year with no diesel technicians, which was significant to our operation. Meant we had to send everything out and it was a real loss of resiliency for us. Item, the request to revise the title of the following classifications. Item Q2A, Equipment Mechanic to Automotive Mechanic. It was our feeling that that just added a little more description to what it actually was. Both the diesel technician and the auto mechanic have what we call medium duty, which is equipment contained within them, which is kind of the middle, right, between your standard trucks and your heavy equipment. And then both employment or both position descriptions and classifications will have language added for coolant. Because we hadn't revised these in so long, we didn't have really the servicing of air conditioners in them, which is significant and actually a requirement of CDL vehicles these days. And then lastly, item Q2.B, Road Maintenance Superintendent, just changing it to Road Superintendent. And then making it so that we have two road superintendents, one in charge of operations and one in charge of construction. From an internal position already in a reclassification gives us an opportunity to really define that position the way it should have been defined anyway. Lastly, item Q5, to revise the classification of Equipment Operator II is also to be consistent with items that were negotiated in that union contract.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on items Q one through eight? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Commissioners, that brings us to item five, Legislative Update.
Have anything to go over? We're in the heart of it now. From the update on my laptop here, it looks like we're filibustering the budget on final reading. So that's always a good sign. I think we can move on to public comment.
Item six, Public Comment. Those wishing to speak on items related to county business not on the agenda may do so at this time.
Robert Boer, Concerned Citizen. A certain advocate for election verifiability gave a few lectures in the state recently. A certain supermarket tabloid, namely the Central City Newspaper, wrote a disparaging article about this advocate. The tabloid quoted the Merrick County Clerk as saying that she had the utmost confidence in her elections. She went on to say voters should not be put in a position to question the validity of their votes. I agree. So why is Strobel putting voters in the position of questioning the validity of their votes? The only people putting voters in this position are all the people opposed to transparency in our voter rolls and vote counts, namely our clerks, commissioners, supervisors, SOS office, and the members of our legislature. I was made aware of this article yesterday in the clerk's comments and sent the editor of the paper the following, editor. Our founders didn't trust government, so they put in place a compound constitutional republic with checks and balances at multiple levels. Inscribed over the main entrance of our Capitol is the following. The salvation of the state is watchfulness in the citizen. Watchfulness, not trust. Merrick County Clerk Strobel can express all the confidence she wants in her so-called elections, but the people she serves have no obligation whatsoever to adopt that confidence for the following reasons. Number one, Strobel is expressing confidence in her administration of Merrick County elections. That is self-serving and constitutes a huge conflict of interest. Unless, of course, she allows citizens to verify the results for themselves. Strobel, number two, Strobel allows Merrick County votes to be counted by secret private software that can easily be hacked. In fact, a South Dakota citizen recently demonstrated just how easy that is to do. Number three, Strobel won't allow citizens to verify the results with manual counts. Nothing in Nebraska law prohibits a transparent, public manual count of all votes after machine tabulation and before certification of the election. Auditing one or two precincts means nothing. Software can easily be manipulated, be written to manipulate tallies in certain precincts and not in others. Number four, Strobel can't account for all ballots after an election. Number five, Strobel can't provide a chain of custody for all mail out, mail in ballots after an election. Number six, Strobel can't publicly reconcile a list of voters with the number of votes after an election. Number seven, Strobel refuses to acknowledge that voters have every right to question and challenge her lack of integrity. Number eight, Strobel's refusal to be transparent is prima facie evidence that she is hiding something, namely her own incompetence. Number nine, Strobel is not allowing Merrick County citizens the right to exercise their full elective franchise. The elective franchise do not consist only in making voter selection marks on a ballot. The elective franchise includes counting those voter selection marks. Strobel disenfranchises voters when they aren't allowed to actively participate in or verify the entire vote count. Strobel is not administering fair and open elections free from outside influence. That's a quote directly from state statute, as Nebraska law requires. Secret vote counting by ESNS constitutes outside influence. Strobel has allowed ESNS to hijack Merrick County elections, as all of you have allowed ESNS to hijack Lancaster County elections. Strobel took an oath to defend and support our constitution. That constitution provides for elections that are accurately and verifiably, that accurately and verifiably so reflect the consent and will of the people. She has betrayed that oath. Lastly, but not least, Strobel has committed herself to gaslighting the voters of Merrick County with an expectation that they should simply trust her. No honest, genuine public servant in her position would do such a thing. Matt, thank you for your comments about the health board. And I'm glad you're back, sir. I got cheated 10 seconds last week.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak?
I'm Dwayne Rousher. Good morning. With the elections coming up, that's one of my concerns that I have is about our elections and the integrity that we have, that we're able to actually verify the election and know, you know, who we actually voted for and that our vote counted. I know each of you feel like you were elected based upon what you were told, but what has actuality happened here? Is it really the votes of the people in your districts that voted you in? Or are you just a person that was selected to be on this board? So please, take a look at the election process that we go through. I think we need to make a lot of changes. We need to be able to know that the information that we're receiving is actually verifiable and auditable. That's one thing I'd like to see you pursue. Thank you.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak? That we can move on to announcements.
Item seven, announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, March 28th, 2024, at 8:30 a.m., with the Board of Equalization immediately following in room 112 of the County City Building. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024, at 9 a.m., with the Board of Equalization immediately following in room 112 of the County City Building. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447 or commish@lancaster NE.gov. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on LNK TV. LNK TV is available on ALO Channel 2 and Spectrum Channel 1300. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on YouTube and Facebook. LNK TV apps are available on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV. Item made as adjournment.
I move we adjourn.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ammison?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We will now convene the Lancaster County Board of Equalization meeting for Tuesday, March 26th.
Location announcement of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located at the wall of the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, all written materials to be discussed at today's open meeting are available for electronic viewing from the county clerk's staff. Printing options are available upon request. These materials can also be viewed at the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Brings us to item one, minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, March 19th, 2024.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Ammison?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item two is the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
Move approval of the additions and reductions. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ammison?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item three is our public hearing for the motor vehicle tax exemption applications for the Lincoln Literacy Council, Cornhusker Council, Cristo Rey Catholic Church, and First Lutheran Church.
Public hearing. We will now open the public hearings on the motor vehicle tax exemption applications. Any members of the public looking to speak? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and move on to item four.
Item four is action on the following, the motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ammison?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries, five zero. Commissioners, next on the agenda was executive session, but I have a note that we did not need executive session today.
Yep.
So that brings us to item six, public comment. Those wishing to speak on items related to county Board of Equalization business not on the agenda may do so at this time.
Any members of the public wishing to speak? Seeing none.
Move we adjourn.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ammison?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.